I would like to call the January 4, 2023 Planning and Zoning Commission Regular Meeting Charter. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Please call the roll.
Smithwick Ailey.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
Barbaza.
Present.
Burton.
Here.
Murray.
Here.
And Totfest.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda? Are there any objections to approve in the agenda? Hearing none, the agenda is approved. Move on to approval of the minutes. The Planning and Zoning Commission meeting of December 7, 2022 meeting minutes. Are there any changes to the minutes? Are there any objections to approve in the minutes? Hearing none, the minutes are approved. We are now to presentations with prior notice, and there are none. We'll move on to our public hearing. And first is Resolution PG 2022-016, recommending amendment of Saldana Municipal Code Title 17 by establishing a new subchapter 17.10.267, Commercial Core District. Substitute Resolution PG 2022-016, recommending amendment of Saldana Municipal Code Title 17 by establishing a new subchapter 17.10.267, Commercial Core District, and amending sections of Saldana Municipal Code Titles 1, 15, and 17 to establish standards for the Commercial Core zoning district. The motion to approve Resolution PG 2022-06 is on the floor from the December 17, 2022 meeting. May we have the staff report?
Did we get a motion?
Oh, did we get a motion? Okay, the motion to approve is on the floor from the December.
Okay, thank you. You're right. Yep, I'm sorry. I'm in a pattern here. Thank you. So this, as you mentioned, is a continuation of your past meeting where a resolution was introduced, where you had initially started with the thought of creating a district that would make some changes or create a, I should say, a new district that would create some changes, refined commercial district that would get, I think, closer to what our planning documents say for the city as far as our commercial district along the river. And at that meeting where the item was postponed, we had identified a number of different things that still needed some work. And on page 22 of your packet is the memo from me that outlines, looks like nine different things that were modified. The first one was the inclusion of light industry specifically for breweries and brewpubs, maker crafts. So that was added into the resolution. Daycares were allowed through the, or I should say, are listed down as conditionally uses. Commercial parking lots, same thing, allowed as conditionally use. Pawn shops and short-term lenders were excluded. And as you'll see, as I go through the resolution itself, a number of whereas's were included to address that issue. So we worked with our attorney on this one in particular because it is excluding a class or certain business types within a class of business types. So our attorney wanted to make sure that we had the findings in place to make such a recommendation. Schools, we did put schools back in after our discussion about some schools might be appropriate. We talked about dance schools, music schools, those types of things. So that is now included. We also talked about mixed use, where some residential mixed use, both vertically and horizontally, would be acceptable and a preferred option. So that was modified according to your wishes. We also added the language, both to some of the whereas statements and into the intent statement with regard to the Kenai River being an important part of the Commercial Core zoning district. So I'll review that with you as we go through the resolution. I had mentioned at the time that non-conforming provisions were necessary, and those were added. And then also, our attorney indicated, after he looked through it closely, that we had a separate item for electric and non-motorized bike rentals as being an allowable use. And he said that's not necessary, that essentially that's either a personal services or a retail use, and there's no need to call them out. They would be allowed. So if somebody put an application in today, we'd say, sure, it's a retail use, you can go in. So there was no need to do that. So that was removed. So in a minute, I'll go through the substitute resolution because we went from basically two seconds, sections, to about 15 sections. So there was a lot of different codes or sections within the code that this proposal touches. And again, this creates a new zoning district essentially in our menu of zoning districts, and you'll see that as we go through the resolution. And I'm just going to highlight a couple of the things in the resolution. So I'm looking now at page nine of your packet. And I mentioned that there were a number of new whereas statements, and there's probably about eight of them that deal with both short-term lenders and pawn shops. They start by saying that these types of businesses exist, and they're known as, for example, short-term lenders or payday lenders. Then the next whereas statements is that they can often have an unreasonable adverse effect upon the elderly, economically disadvantaged military service members and other citizens, and that they can create a cycle of inescapable debt, thereby increasing poverty and economic And then the same kind of format for pawn shops, that there exist business practices where you can get money loaned to you upon you depositing personal property, and they're known as pawn shops or pawning. And that these types of uses have the potential to decrease the character of a neighborhood, lower property values, and discourage people from opening businesses. So those specific whereas statements were added because of, because we are excluding those two specific uses. So it was important that we included the findings within this resolution as the supporting evidence or findings that these are the reasons why we feel it's important to not allow these two uses. So that's the first thing I wanted to call out. The second thing is on page 10, and that is, and right now, I'm just going to run through the sections with you because we added so many of them. The first section that's added in that resolution is an amendment to our minor offense schedule. So you'll see there that the Commercial Core zoning district violation, if a violation occurs, it can be, we can use the minor offense procedures to issue a ticket and issue a fine. So that is similar to all of the other zoning districts. It's just adding commercial in with every other one. Section 2 is a revision to our signed code, and section 3 is also a revision to our signed code. And again, what it does is include the Commercial Core District along with the other commercial districts that are under regulation under the signed code. So it's basically finding a home for it and inserting it into that code. Section 4, definitions, since we did include the provisions for both pawn shops and lending, the short-term lenders, it was important that we provide definitions, and so that's what section 4 provides, are those definitions. Section 5, I mentioned that we essentially have a menu of zoning district, and section 5 or section 17, 10, 200 of our code is the section that establishes all of our zoning districts. And so this basically required us to insert the Commercial Core District into that list of districts. Section 6 is an amendment to the planned use development section of code. So we have a section in there that, again, lists all the zoning districts where PUDs are allowable, and we've inserted Commercial Core in that list. And then section 7 is the regulations itself for the new zoning district, the Commercial Core District. So that was section 1 in the previous version of your resolution. And again, sorry, this is the substitute that we're going through and not the original. So I'll, just a couple of things in section 7. A, the intent, the very first sentence, the Commercial District is intended to provide a core area that is visually pleasing, that integrates Kenai River into downtown economic and recreational opportunities, and so on. So that was the insertion of the Kenai River component that we had talked about at our last meeting. And then into section 7B, permitted principal uses and structures, on page 14. Item 2, dwellings, this is something that I mentioned when I went through the staff report. Dwellings are okay as long as they are a component of mixed-use development. Number 5, industry, breweries, brewpubs, distilleries, and maker crafts are permitted light industry uses. Under personal services, we've got the exclusion of pawn shops and short-term loans. And number 12, schools, the inclusion of dance schools and academies in music and vocal instruction. In section C on page 14, daycare centers were inserted. So this is the conditionally used section. So daycares, if one was proposed, would have to come before the Planning Commission, get a conditionally used permit. Same thing with item 7, parking lots or commercial parking lots that would require a conditionally used permit by this body. Section E on page 15 are the general standards, and you asked to include a new standard that dealt with building materials. And so E6 was added. Natural or natural appearing materials, stone, brick, timber, wood, or other similar materials, shall be incorporated into the design and construction of street-facing facades and public entryways for new construction and for exterior building remodels. Moving on to section 8, page 16. This section amends the townhouse section. So it's basically, we're, again, putting the Commercial Core District in with a number of other zoning districts where they're already allowed, and saying that townhouse development would be, would be fine within the Commercial Core District. And section 9 deals with landscaping. So our landscape code is required in both the limited commercial and commercial districts. What this does is it puts an S under A. So if you look at section 9, A, all uses in the commercial districts. That's the only change. It makes it plural. So all zoning, all commercial zoning districts are required to have landscaping. Section 10, animals. So currently in our code, in the commercial districts, the keeping of farm animals is allowed, and, or wild animals for that. And so this basically says the keeping of farm or wild animals is prohibited in the Commercial Core, the commercial and limited commercial districts. In section 11, short-term rentals, that section is amended to, again, insert Commercial Core with other commercial uses as allowing owner-occupied short-term rentals as principal uses and as home occupations in other districts. And similar, section 12 also deals with short-term rentals, except for non-owner-occupied short-term rentals. And it, again, inserts Commercial Core in the spot and explains that an administrative permit would be required in the Commercial Core District. Section 13, temporary uses. So this section of code allows for things like the market at Addy Camp or the Swank Street Market, or a carnival or festival. That would be a temporary use. And the Commercial Core zoning district was, again, inserted in the list of zoning districts that would permit temporary uses. Section 14 is an amendment to our summary of land uses allowed in the zoning district. So at the end of our zoning code Title 17, there's an extensive table that basically lists all of the different uses and all those different zoning districts, and either puts an X for prohibited, a P for permitted, or a C for conditional next to that use. So it's kind of a handy way for us to quickly go and look at things. And what this does is this updates that by including Commercial Core in that, in that table and inserting it as a new column between Commercial and the Parks and Recreation District. And that is the summary of the changes to what you considered last time. So this, that was the substitute that we went through. And at this point, I'm going to stop and see if there's questions and see where you want to take this.
So do I open the public hearing right now instead of taking, okay, that's what that. The public hearing is now open on both Resolution PG 2022-016 and Substitute Resolution 2022-016. Is there any member of the public who wishes to speak on these items? For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the Raise Your Hand button, and phone participants by dialing *9 on your telephone.
Madam Chair.
Yeah.
Just point of order, shouldn't we just substitute the, have this, not both motions up on the floor, but substitute the substitution motion, that's what will be considered, because otherwise there'll be confusion.
I believe as, as Chairperson Charlene is going through the process, this is the correct procedure to go through the public hearing and then take the motion to amend the original motion and to amend it by substitution.
Okay.
Okay. Are there any participants via Zoom? And there's nobody in the room, with no one else wishing to speak. The public hearing is now closed. May I have a motion to amend PG Resolution 2022-016 by substitute PG Resolution 2022-06?
I move to amend PG Resolution 2022-016 by substitute PG Resolution 2022-016.
A second?
Second.
Thank you. Are there any commission comments or questions for staff?
Madam Chair, in that long list at the end, there certainly is, under the question of marijuana establishments. It doesn't get called out in the issue, you know, the whereas's up in the front of the resolution, but it, you know, it has all X's there. Should there, should there be any language anyplace else other than that section, I guess is my question?
Thank you. So let's take a look here. Marijuana establishments. So marijuana establishments are allowed as a permitted use within the commercial district. So they're still allowed.
Right.
And so they are listed here in this table as their own separate use, not as a separate class or as a part of a class. They are its own, its own separate use. And all of the adopting regulations, when the marijuana regulations were adopted, included all of those whereas statements, similar to what we went through for pawn shops and short-term lenders. The reasons behind the regulations that allow them in some areas and prohibit them in others. So that's already in the books.
So that's already, that's already in the books.
Under previous regulations.
Okay, that's, that answers it. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Not hearing any. I will call for the vote on the motion to amend. If the motion to amend by substitute Resolution 2022-016 passes, the substitute resolution is now on the floor. So call for the vote.
Barbaza. Burton.
Yes.
Murray.
Yes.
Totfest.
Yes.
Smithwick Ailey.
Yes.
And Anderson.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, so the amended motion passes. Now we will call for the vote on the motion to approve. Are there any commissioner comments or questions for staff? Okay, so I will call for the vote on the motion to approve.
Barbaza.
Yes.
Burton.
Yes.
Murray.
Yes.
Totfest.
Yes.
Smithwick Ailey.
Yes.
And Anderson.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, thank you. Now we will move on to item B, Resolution PG 2023-001, recommending amendment of Saldana Municipal Code Title 17 to establish standards for the use of accessory dwelling units as short-term rentals. May I have a motion to approve?
I move to approve Resolution Number PG 2023-001, recommending amendment of Saldana Municipal Code Title 17 to establish standards for accessory dwelling units as short-term rentals.
Can I have a second, please?
I second.
Thank you. May we have the staff report?
Thank you. So this, this resolution was introduced by Councilmember Jordan Chilson, who's here tonight, and will speak to it at the public hearing. So I'm going to just briefly state that what this proposal does is only allows accessory dwelling units in the rural residential district to be used as short-term rentals. So currently, ADUs in all of the residential districts can be used as short-term rentals. So this would say you can't use them as short-term rentals in the single-family, single-family to family, or multifamily residential districts, but you could use an ADU as a short-term rental in the rural residential district. So with that, I'll stop my comments and let you have your public hearing, and Mr. Chilson will be able to answer. I'm sure any additional questions.
Okay, thank you. The public hearing is now open. Is there any member of the public who wishes to speak on this item? Please come up and state your name and where you're from.
Thank you. Jordan Chilson, Saldana, Alaska. I just got my notes ready here. Okay, so just good evening, and thank you all for the opportunity to come speak to this ordinance I'm sponsoring tonight. As you know, and as John had mentioned, Ordinance 2022-029 was recently passed by our council rewriting our code as it pertains to ADUs. I know that a lot, a lot of work went into this, and I'm really appreciative of all of your parts in making that possible. As you know, that code rewrite really overhauled how we allow ADUs to be used in our city, with one of the main goals of that rewrite being to diversify and expand housing options within our city. So as it was structured before, ADUs were only allowed to be used for personal use. There really was no permitted use for rentals. And with that language that passed, we've really opened the floodgates and said, okay, ADUs can now be used for rentals, but there's no delineation between short-term rentals and long-term rentals. And the reason that I'm here tonight with this proposed code amendment is because of that lack of delineation, I do have some concerns about increasing the number of rental units in our city and doing so in a way that supports those that are most in need of stable long-term housing. With no restriction on ADU short-term rental use, I believe there is a very real risk that the majority of these new units will land on the market as short-term rentals, and we will have done nothing meaningful to help address the local housing needs. Traditional rental units being removed from the market for short-term rental conversion is already a very real problem throughout our state and local region. Trying to gather some data that I can bring forward for your consideration tonight, I was able to go to the Alaska Housing Finance Corporation, and they had a really helpful article in November that addressed the housing market trends in Alaska, and some interesting things that they talk about in that is that overall in the state, they're seeing vacancy rates going down, average rents are increasing, and the number of homes being used as vacation rentals is also increasing. Just, this is, again, a statewide stat, but it's interesting nonetheless that in 2015, the state noted that there were 500 vacation rentals counted, and by 2022, that number had increased to nearly 7,500. That's a 15-fold increase. Turning over to the Alaska Department of Labor Workforce Development, they actually do a lot of really good data collection on regional stats for housing costs and vacancy rates. Looking at the Kenai Peninsula Borough as a whole, in 2020, we had a 10.6% vacancy rate. In 2021, that decreased to 7.3%, and in 2022, we are now down to 3.5% vacancy rate across the Kenai Peninsula Borough. Looking at short-term rental units, it's also interesting to compare where we stand versus Anchorage. I know there are significantly larger municipalities than the Kenai Peninsula Borough, but nonetheless, Anchorage has 2,300 approximate short-term rental listings. Well, the Kenai Peninsula Borough has 2,100. And if you look at the total housing stock between those two municipalities, Anchorage has about 118,000, and the Kenai Peninsula Borough has about 31,000. So even though we are significantly smaller in total housing units than Anchorage, we already have almost the same number of short-term rental units as Anchorage. And moving beyond raw data, I also wanted to get some feedback from local stakeholders that work with, you know, our people in need in the community that are trying to find housing. So I reached out to Jody Stewart, who is a really key person in making Project Homeless Connect happen. She also works with reentry for recently incarcerated people that are trying to find housing. And if you think about that from the reentry perspective, you know, trying to find housing and not being able to presents a very real risk to recidivism. And she was able to convey that, you know, they are seeing an increased number of people that are really struggling to find housing. They're seeing changes to rental agreements that are, you know, increasing the rent rates, and even just to struggle to find leases that are even just a 12-month lease. I mean, this is a really common trend with landlords that are converting to nine-month leases or less so that they can free up that golden window in the summer to do short-term rentals, and that really impacts our housing stock Additionally, I reached out to Brandy McGee, who is the Executive Director for the Kenai Peninsula Housing Initiative. She was able to share that they are seeing fewer housing options than they've seen in the past, with lots of people they work with very much struggling to find stable long-term housing. She did share some interesting metrics, that they do keep track of waiting lists for people by classes and areas within the Kenai Peninsula. And just looking at the Saldana area, their waiting list for low-income families trying to find housing has historically been about 10 people or so on that list or less. Currently, there are 30 families just in the Saldana area trying to find stable housing. I believe it is important that we take proactive steps to minimize the impacts of these trends locally. And what this code change would do, as John had mentioned, is it would basically take this influx of ADUs that we're making available to rent in the residential districts and making sure that they're used for our residents, that these should be made available for long-term housing, not just opening the floodgates on more Airbnb units in our residential districts. It does allow the continued permitted use of short-term rentals in the rural residential districts, as John had mentioned, although short-term rentals aren't permitted per code. In the Commercial District, there are STR-like rental facilities available in the Commercial District, kind of like B&amp;B operations that are, you know, little cottages and so forth. So it doesn't really impact any of the negative stock. It's just really ensuring that, again, if we're opening the development of rental ADUs in our residential districts, we're making sure they're benefiting our residents. Although I personally don't feel that this proposed language goes far enough, I believe it is, however, a good start to ensure we're doing what we can to protect local housing options for those most in need of them, while still allowing, as I mentioned, a balance of STRs elsewhere in the city. Thank you for your consideration. I'd be happy to stand for any questions.
Does anybody have any questions? I'm hearing any. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there, is there anybody else here that would like to speak on that? Then I will go to the Zoom audience. For those participating through Zoom, please raise your hand if you would like to comment. App users by pressing the Raise Your Hand button, and phone participants by dialing *9 on your telephone. Don't have any? Okay. No one else wishing to speak. The public hearing is now closed. Are there any commission comments or questions for staff? Are there any commission comments or questions for staff?
So I guess this is, these are, these are the dwellings that we can build on our property. It doesn't seem like the most likely that someone wants to build that to rent to low-income, as low-income housing. And it does benefit our economy to open the door to tourism. So I'm not really sure that I'm seeing like completely restricting across the board. There's not, there's not very much available in the, just the rural residential district. Completely restricting, I guess, all of our residents of Soldatna who have the opportunity to possibly have some income in the summer also brings tourists into our community. And I don't feel like it's very likely that they're going to want to build them in order to rent to recently incarcerated people, unless it's someone that's their family already. I don't know. This is the first that I've kind of been exposed to this, so. It seems extreme to me.
Are there any other questions, comments? For staff?
I believe it's just really adding the short-term and long-term, right? It's not saying that you have to pick one. Guess I'm a little confused on that.
I understood it to completely exclude any short-term rental, unless you're in rural residential.
Okay, I didn't pick up on that.
So I'll see if I can help straighten it out. And if not, Mr. Chilson can jump forward again if the commission allows. So in this situation, you know, I think Mr. Chilson was using some statistics to show that, that there's different types of people seeking long-term housing options, and they just aren't there, whether they're people that are homeless or who are recent, were recently incarcerated. Those were just two examples where the statistics were available. But in general, what, what he's suggesting is that any new accessory dwelling units that are constructed in the single-family, single-family, two-family, and in the multifamily districts only be for long-term rental. Whatever they're, whoever they are, any, any long-term renter, you or I, if you built an ADU in those districts, you would only be able to have someone there that was on a contract for more than 30 days. Whereas if you're in the rural residential district, you can build an ADU and either rent it out to someone for short-term, less than 30 days, or long-term. The choice would be yours. So it's just limiting where the, the short-term rentals would be allowed with regard to the rural residential zoning district to that set of housing stock. I'm not sure, did that help clarify things at all? If not, I would ask Mr. Chilson to...
Yeah, sure, absolutely.
Thank you. We've had ADUs in our city for some time now. And up until the recent code that passed our council, ADUs were not allowed to be used for long-term rentals or short-term rentals. Just no rentals of any form for those ADUs were permitted. Now, if you wanted to have an ADU in your backyard just to have, you know, having a mother-in-law apartment or loca cita back there for family to stay in, when they come in town, you get some friends come in, they want to, you know, fish for a week or two while they're up here, that's always been allowed, and that's not going to change. I'm not, my intent with this is not to restrict that ability that people have always had to use their ADUs for friends, family, people coming through as they always have. It's just that if we are going to rent them, I believe it's important that we make sure that we adhere to the goal of trying to diversify and protect housing stock within the city of Soldatna. And I did provide a lot of statistics in relation to low-income, and I even referenced reentry for those that are recently incarcerated. That's not the entire focus. That was just one particular user example. That's, you know, our most at-risk people. But I would say just residents in general in Soldatna. I mean, regardless of where you are on the risk scale or the income scale, people need apartments in Soldatna, and there's not a lot of apartments out there. And if we're going to be converting ADUs that have historically not been allowed to be rentals, and now we're going to make them rentals, I think this is a great opportunity to increase long-term rental housing stock in Soldatna. And again, it's not necessarily making low-income housing in your backyard. It's just if I have a detached apartment in my backyard, rather than converting that to an Airbnb unit, why don't we use that to make sure we're increasing housing stock for anyone in Soldatna that needs a rental unit that's not just eight or nine months a year? But again, you can still do ADUs for friends, family, as you always have. That, there's no reduction in use that has been established in the past for ADUs.
So this would take away your option, though, to go short-term. You would only be allowed to rent long-term, is that?
It's...
To sum it up?
My intent was that it's not taking away the short-term option.
For money?
Correct.
For income it is, right?
Correct. But that was an option that was never there.
Right, but it is now. So when 29 was passed, ADUs became available, right? Short-term and long-term?
Correct.
So the owner had the option to pick one or the other?
Sure.
And then this one, what this is going to do is take away the short-term option for income purposes and only make it available for long-term purposes.
Correct.
And long-term would be over 30 days.
Yes. When that, when that language passed our council, it was my intent to introduce an amendment at the time it was considered where we never would have had short-term rentals available as an option for, for consideration. I was out of town during the meeting, so I wasn't able to make that amendment, which is the whole reason I'm here, is I have to introduce this as a whole separate ordinance. And it is unfortunate that we have this, like, two-month gap in there where they are technically permitted. I would rather have just amended this from the get-go to where they never would have been permitted. But because of just the way our process works, I have to bring this back two months later. So there would be a minor gap. But I try and move as quickly as I can so we don't have as much confusion there.
I understand. But then the way I summed it up, that is, that is correct, right? Just to make sure I'm...
Long-term rentals only, and then the way it's been prior to the code language that we recently passed.
And if this doesn't pass, then it would just be default to how it was originally written? And this is an amendment to how it was originally written?
This is an amendment to what we just recently passed.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair. Just a quick clarification based on Mr. Anderson's comments, that this, this is a recommendation of the planning commission to city council. City council would take this up at their, their next meeting. And so this is, you know, your opportunity to make a recommendation on this. It's, it's not necessarily passing it or failing it. It's a recommendation.
Dennis?
Madam Chair, what proportion of the available property is rural residential within the confines? Is it 25%, 15%, 5%? So I mean, in terms of availability of, you know, the use of the accessory dwelling unit for a short-term rental, addressing some of the needs that Jenny brought up.
Thank you. I'm going to see if I have my notes on that. I, I actually provided this information to Mr. Chilson and also to, Jen and I worked on it, and I just don't think I have that in front of me. But if my memory serves me, rural residential makes up probably about a third of, if you break the zoning districts down by parcels, rural residential makes up about a third of the parcels in, in the city. And so some of those are vacant, some are, you know, fully occupied. But that's, we didn't count occupied parcels or number of dwelling units on parcels. It was just a convenient way to say roughly a third of the parcels in the city are dedicated for rural residential.
Thank you.
And does our, did our ADU code limit one per parcel? Is that?
That is correct.
Basically ADUs?
Correct.
Just for my clarification, Commissioner Burton. For the, if, if we have long-term rentals for these ADUs, are we essentially targeting a certain type of need? Because the ADUs, and this is my clarification, or my need for clarification, the ADUs are about 725 or 750 square feet in size. So for long-term rental, we're only targeting a subset of the population who need housing for that size.
Through the chart, yes, Mr. Burton, 750 square foot was the, the maximum size for accessory dwelling units. The, there wasn't, or there isn't a target population that was expressed when that ordinance was passed. It was an opportunity that we, we're seeing across the nation that, that folks are trying to build more affordable housing, whether it's for their kids, their, their parents, extended family, or friends. The cost of housing has created this, this need. And so in that respect, it, it was just a, simply an opportunity to create small housing in places where we couldn't normally create it. So under, you know, prior to this, as Mr. Chilson said, there was this exception in our code that would allow for, it was, it was kind of, it was pretty crazy. It said you could, you could build a, an accessory unit, but you couldn't charge rent, and it had to be a family member that lived there. So what happens, you know, after the family member leaves? You know, then you're stuck with an empty unit that you can't do anything with? So that was taken away. The new ordinance was adopted. And the ADUs can be income generators, whether it's a short-term or long-term. You know, and I think it's, it's probably, probably fair to say that the short-term rental will lead to, I mean, and I think that's, it's part of the issue or part of the reason that we're seeing so many conversions, that the short-term rentals can produce a higher amount of income than a long-term rental. And so there's, there's, there is that economic incentive to convert perhaps a long-term rental to a short-term rental. And so what, what Mr. Chilson's ordinance does is basically say a portion of the ADUs in three of the four zoning districts can't be used as short-term rentals, long-term rentals. I'm not sure I hit on all of the points you made, Mr. Burton, but let me know.
Well, I, I think, you know, some of the commissioners made some good points in terms of income generators in the, in the summer. And one of the, one of our goals of the downtown area is increased traffic, right? And so if we are allowing short-term rentals within the, within walking proximity of this downtown area that people come up to fish, they rent these short-term rentals, they, we increase the likelihood of them walking down to one of the businesses. So I just, I, I think that's something we should consider as well.
Yeah, and also the, the short-term rentals, if, if we restrict our local landowners from being able to participate in that income opportunity, then it's only, you know, hotels. And do we currently have restrictions on homeowners using their properties as short-term rentals? Is it completely restricted already?
We do, we do require permits for short-term rentals. So, you know, historically, we had considered short-term rentals as B&amp;Bs. And at one point, we had required conditional use permits. With the advent of VRBO and Airbnb, the traditional B&amp;B was, you know, lumped under this short-term rental concept. And in that respect, the, the, when the city adopted its, its code, it basically said, if you live in your home like a traditional B&amp;B, where, you know, you're inviting someone to use part of your room or an upper or lower flat, you can go ahead and do that with just a simple permit or as a home occupation without a permit. If, however, you do not live in the building, in the home, and you want to rent it out, then you need to have a permit for a short-term rental. You need to have an administrative permit in some of our zoning districts. So that's how short-term rentals are currently regulated.
So it's allowed, but not, but they have to have a permit?
In, in many cases, yes.
Okay, but then this one, the homeowner, if they have an ADU, they have to occupy the home, and they can't do a short-term rental if we pass this? Or if we, if city council passes it?
Under this scenario, I believe if you have an ADU in the rural residential district, then, and you want to rent one of the units out, either the ADU or the principal structure out as a short-term rental, you have to live in the other one. So that's, that's how it reads currently under, under the proposal.
And so in the other three districts, if this passes, they have to live in the home to have an ADU, and they can't rent the ADU short-term? So they wouldn't even, like, technically, they should be able to rent their own house?
Yes.
If they have a permit? But if they have an ADU, they won't be able to do that either?
So in the other districts, right? If they have an ADU, they would have to, and they want to rent it, it would have to be for long-term. They can also rent their, their principal house as, as a long-term rental as well. There's nothing that would prohibit that.
But not a short-term rental? If they have an ADU?
They could do a short-term rental out of their, their home. Yes, if, if they wanted their home to be a short-term rental, yes, they could do that.
Okay. I think the confusion is that I think if you are renting your ADU, you have to have home occupation of the principal home. So you wouldn't be able to do a short-term rental in your home if you had an ADU?
In the rural residential district, if you had an ADU, you either, and you want to do a short-term rental, then you have to live in one of the two structures on, on the property.
I was, yeah, I was asking about the other ones that are being excluded from the ability for the short-term rental of the ADU.
In, in the other zoning districts, if you have, you want an ADU, it, it simply is, it would not be allowed to be a short-term rental. It would just have to be a long-term rental. And in that scenario, the people could live there or not live there, you know, the owners, they didn't have, they, same deal. They can, they can rent their house out long-term. And that wouldn't be an issue.
Okay, I thought, I thought we had a home occupancy rule currently for ADUs, if you wanted to rent out the ADU.
No. We don't.
Madam Chair, Dennis Murray. So just to clarify, John, to Jenny's point that if you have a home and you want to rent that home out for short-term rentals, in the, in the two districts, commercial districts, you're allowed to do that. To have, to have that personal home used. You don't have to be occupying it. You can, you can rent it out for periods of time, short-term rental. If you have an ADU as part of that... If you have an ADU as part of that property, you could rent out the home for short-term rentals and live in the ADU, and that's a requirement. You'd have to be there on the property if those two circumstances exist. Is that, is that accurate? So that does somewhat go to the point, if someone wanted to build an ADU because maybe they, they want to, they want to be up here just in the summertime, but they'd like to rent the other place out, either short-term or long-term, they have that opportunity to do that. They just would be restricted the amount of space they would have when they were in town. I mean, just making a scenario there. But they do have that option to rent out, short-term, their home, without an ADU involved at all. And, and if they then subsequently build an ADU, they could live in an ADU and rent out their home. Okay? Short-term.
And if I may, right now, as we're permitting these short-term rentals with administrative permit, there are, I know, three people who move out of their home and into their RV while they're renting their home out for supplemental income. So that situation is not far-fetched.
Is that allowed, living in your RV on your property?
They, they go to campgrounds, or to a friend's house, yeah.
Okay, because I thought it wasn't.
But for clarification, they can't rent both out, short-term, right? The ADU are their primary residence?
It just, is there some confusion then? So if this passed the way we're looking at it right now, in those three districts, they could still do short-term rentals, but only if they choose to live in the smaller unit?
No, and, and I'll invite Mr. Chilson to...
Okay.
Again, within those three districts, if you have an ADU, you, you cannot occupy it as a, as a short-term rental.
But you could, as the homeowner, you could live in it and rent out your main house?
Yes, yes.
Okay, just, but in those three districts, that would be the scenario, instead of being able to choose which one you were going to live in? Go ahead, John. Oh, sorry.
Thank you. And I, I think as you're working through this conversation, you're, you're kind of coming to the same conclusion that we already have short-term rentals throughout the city. There's a lot of them. And if you look at the residential districts, there's a lot of established short-term rentals that exist in Soldatna where people are renting out, you know, a lot of these are small starter family homes, one, two, but, you know, two, three bedroom homes, tiny little things. If you just get on Airbnb or VRBO, there's a lot of short-term rentals that are already existing in the city. And this code change doesn't take any, any of that away. It doesn't diminish the existing short-term rental stock that we have. And people can still continue to rent out their main housing unit if they'd like. We have short-term rental options still available in the rural residential district. There's a lot of short-term rental-esque cottage B and B that's permitted in the commercial zone. We have plenty of opportunities for people to monetize their property. And you go into John's point, you know, yes, short-term rentals might be more profitable than long-term rentals, but there is still the long-term rental option to monetize your, your ADU if you would like. I, I just feel very passionately that we do have a shortage of long-term rental housing stock, and we haven't had a lot of opportunities as a city to really increase this. And by this recent code change, that we've opened the doors to allowing ADUs to be rented. This is a very rare opportunity for us to, through code, increase the amount of long-term rental stock that we have in our city. We still have a lot of options, even with this passing, to monetize your property. There's short-term rentals throughout the city that are established, they can continue to grow, but we don't have a lot of opportunities to grow our long-term rental footprint. This is one of the very rare ones that we have. So I, I very much ask you to consider this carefully, and I thank you for your support. And again, stand for any additional questions.
And this is just for the rural, is all this amendment is for, not the other three that we've been discussing?
This, this is amending the three primary residential districts.
All three?
Yes. It's, it doesn't modify rural or commercial. And the, the existing short-term rentals that are established in the residential districts that this code targets, those are not changed. You can still rent out primary residences and all the existing short-term rentals. And there are plenty of them in the residential districts. Those continue to be unaffected. So, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, we'll call for the vote, please.
Burton?
No.
Murray?
Yes.
Tottfest?
Yes.
Smith McGailey?
No.
Anderson?
No.
Barbaza?
No.
Motion fails.
On to Resolution PG 2023-002, recommending that Lot A-2 of the preliminary plat of the new Homestead subdivision be rezoned from rural residential to commercial on the official zoning map. May I have her motion to approve?
Motion to approve Resolution PG 2023-002, recommending that Lot A2 of the preliminary plat for the new Homestead subdivision be rezoned from rural residential to commercial on the official zoning map.
Okay, second?
I'll second it, Murray.
Thank you. May we have the staff report, please?
Thank you. So I'm on page 38 of your packet, which provides a summary of the proposed rezon. And this rezon is requested by Lisa Schmider, who is the sole owner of the area to be rezoned. And if you look at the screen above you, you can see a large parcel and outline in blue is owned by Ms. Schmider. And the green-hatched area, the word says subject area of rezon, that is the area that she would like rezoned to commercial. It is also on your agenda after this hearing for a plat that would create that lot. And so this, this proposal before you is conditioned on the plat being approved. So let me go on. So the city entered into an agreement with Ms. Schmider to purchase a portion of her property to facilitate the extension of Homestead Lane. And if you look at Figure 2 on page 39, you'll see a yellow-hatched area that represents the area that the city is working with Ms. Schmider to purchase. And that, once it's purchased, it will be dedicated as right-of-way, so that Homestead Lane can be extended all the way through East Readout. As part of this process with Ms. Schmider, and at her request, the city agreed to further subdivide Track A, so that a new lot, Lot A2, which is the green-hatched area, would be created. So she's basically taking her large Track A, giving the city a portion for right-of-way dedication, and then a smaller portion of it to create a parcel. And that new parcel would be about 0.67 acres in size, and it would abut both Homestead Lane and East Readout. And that is the area that we're talking about for the rezon. Staff requests that the rezon of proposed Lot A2 occur concurrently with the subdivision of the parcel. Lot A2 would be created as part of the new Homestead subdivision, which is scheduled, again, for tonight. The rezon would not become effective until after the recording of the new Homestead subdivision plat. If the plat is not recording, the rezoning will not occur. The intent for this parcel is commercial use. That's what Ms. Schmider would like to develop this lot. And she noted the commercial development already occurring on, on Homestead, and would like to continue that all the way up to her property. As I mentioned, most of the parcels along Homestead Lane are currently zoned commercial, and several of them already in use. When we look at the code analysis on page 40 of your packet, we find that, that the, all the standards are, are met under this proposed rezoning. And essentially, moving from a rural residential district to a commercial district results in the minimum lot size being removed, because there's no minimum lot size in commercial district. There's no minimum lot width, there's no minimum lot coverage. And there is a building, a maximum building height, and that would be increased. So again, under, when we do our code analysis, everything is met under, under the code. When we look at other sections of code, like Section 1710435, that's a section that governs amendments to the, to the zoning map, and it requires petitions initiated by individuals beside a majority of the property owners. And Ms. Schmider does own the parcel and is requesting the amendment. The code also states that we can only rezon if the parcel is two acres in size, or if it enlarges an existing zoning district boundary. And that's what this one does, it enlarges an existing zoning district boundary. When we look at the Soldatna Comprehensive Plan and Vision Soldatna 2030, we find that it's consistent, the general, the generalized future land use map on page 63 of the plan, and I believe that's in your packet on page 43, does show this area as being zoned commercial. Also, one of the characteristics of the commercial land use classification is the availability of city water and sewer, and sewer and water are available to this, this project, or to this parcel. So again, with it being consistent with the future land use map, and with it meeting all the zoning standards and code requirements, staff does recommend the planning commission recommend approval to the council, subject to the approval and recording of the new Homestead subdivision plat. And PG Resolution 23002 was prepared for use and recommends approval. A yes vote would recommend approval of the rezoning, and a no vote would recommend denial of the rezoning. And that's the end of the staff report.
Okay, thank you. The public hearing is now open. Is there any member of the public who wishes to speak on this item? Not seeing any coming forward. Are there any on Zoom? Nobody's on Zoom. Okay. With no one else wishing to speak, the public hearing is now closed. Are there any commission comments or questions for staff?
Is 2A going to be still owned by the original owner? And it's just going to be a new plot? Is that my understanding?
Through the chair, yes. Track Day will continue to be owned by the, the owner, and the smaller parcel that is being subdivided, right now, at this point anyway, it will remain in her ownership. I don't know whether her plans are to hold on to it short-term, long-term, or, or not, but I would imagine at some point, if her desire is to sell it commercial, or to develop commercially, she might want to sell it. But she also may run her own business off it, I'm, I'm not sure.
Thank you, John.
Any other questions?
There's a request for the, a vacation of the 40-foot utility easement along the eastern boundary of proposed Lot B3, where on, oh, I see. Okay. Okay, so that, that easement has no connection whatsoever to Lot A2. If I'm, am I seeing that correctly?
You are correct. It has nothing to do with the rezon or Lot A2. It will be discussed as part of our plat review when we do that as our next agenda item. Basically, there's, there's no use of that, that easement. And the surveyor did reach out to all of the utilities and, and found that there was no objections, and so we were, the request is for that to be removed.
Thanks, John.
Any other questions? Okay, we'll call for the vote, please.
Murray?
Yes.
Tottfest?
Yes.
Smith McGailey?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Barbaza?
Yes.
Burton?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to unfinished business, and there isn't any. Now on to new business. Resolution PG 2023-003, recommending approval of the preliminary plat of the new Homestead subdivision. May I have a motion to approve?
I move to approve Resolution PG 2023-003, recommending approval of the preliminary plat of the new Homestead subdivision.
Second?
Thank you. May we have the staff report, please?
The staff report can be found on page 54 of your printed packet. On November 15th, 2022, Edge Survey and Design submitted a preliminary plat to the city for the subdivision of two lots into three lots, in the dedication of a right-of-way extension of the Homestead Lane. Finalized documents were submitted on November 22nd. Edge Survey and Design represents the owner of record, Lisa Schmider, as well as the city of Soldatna. The preliminary plat for Track A, which is Parcel 0603008, is addressed as 405 East Readout Avenue. Track B-2C is Parcel 06030033. According to Edge Survey and Design, the existing parcels have an area of 9.5 and 3.46 acres respectively. Track A contains a single-family dwelling. Track B-2C is undeveloped. The subdivision will create three parcels. And so it'll be Lot A1, Lot A2, and Lot B3. And this is that 60-foot dedicated right-of-way extension of Homestead Lane. The resolution you heard previously, just now, that 2023002 proposed a rezon contingent upon the plating action of this resolution. Track A is zoned rural residential, Track B-2C is commercial. The surrounding parcels to the east are zoned rural residential, as are most of the parcels to the south. The majority of surrounding parcels to the north and west are zoned commercial, one of the parcels to the south is zoned commercial. So again, the applicants have requested that the proposed Lot A2 be rezoned to commercial through that Resolution 2023002. The intention is for the new Homestead replat and rezon request to be reviewed and passed concurrently. A condition upon Resolution PG 2023002 had stated that the rezon shall not take effect until the plat for the new Homestead subdivision is recorded. Minimum lot size with maximum building height and minimum yard sandal standards for Soldatna municipal code 1710230E are met for the rural residential, as long as A2 is then converted to commercial. So for A1, those standards would be met. And then for the commercial district, as we reviewed a few moments ago, those standards don't exist as far as the, the lot coverage, the size, the width, so, so those standards aren't met. Legal access to proposed lots A1 and A2 are dedicated and constructed from East Readout Avenue. And East Readout Avenue is paved and maintained by the city. Additionally, Lot A2 will have access to the dedicated right-of-way extension of Homestead Lane. Legal access to Lot B3 shall be provided from Homestead Lane. The property is within 300 feet of public water and sewer. It shall be the duty of every real property owner to connect to such property with the nearest public water and sewer in the city if the system is within 300 feet. This plat also requests the vacation of a 40-foot utility easement along the eastern boundary of proposed Lot B3. The easement is not in use and is unnecessary. Soldatna Creek runs through Lot A1, and thus portions of Lot A1 are within the Kenai Peninsula Borough 50-foot Anatomus Stream Protection District. Those restrictions may affect development within the subdivision. Authority to review and approve proposed vacations are ultimately by the Kenai Peninsula Borough. The application was forwarded to our Soldatna Public Works Department, our utility manager, and our streets and maintenance manager. For their comments, they had none. Staff finds that the preliminary plat for the new Homestead subdivision meets the general standards for our code, and therefore recommends that Resolution PG 2023003 is passed. Thank you.
Thank you. The public comment period is now open. Is there any member of the public who wish to speak on this item? Please list your name and where you're from. Thank you.
Jason Young, P O Box 59, Casilloff. I am with Edge Surveys, and I am the surveyor working on this project. Just here to answer any questions. Pretty straightforward, just connecting Homestead Lane to Readout to reduce traffic flow at that bad intersection, creating the small commercial lot as requested by the landowner of A1, who is giving up the little section to connect Homestead Lane. That easement, it was just an old easement from a plat... from a plat that is not used. No idea why they granted it to begin with. There's nothing there, so just getting rid of that. It'll still remain under Homestead Lane, but kind of a moot point with an easement under a right-of-way. It's the only place for utility along there, anyway. Meets all borough code, and trying to have any issues with the borough end of it. That's about it.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, are there any people on Zoom? With no one else wishing to speak, the public comment period is now closed. Are there any commission comments or questions for staff? Not hearing any. We'll call for the vote, please.
Todd Fest.
Yes.
Smithwick Ailey.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Barbaza.
Yes.
Burton.
Yes.
And Murray.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. We'll move on to our agenda to election of Planning Commission Chair and Vice Chair. May I have a nomination for Planning and Zoning Commission Chair, please?
I nominate Caitlin Badla as Commission Chair.
Are there any other nominations? Hearing none. Caitlin Badla, do we vote on that? We don't vote on her. Okay, we do? Because I didn't see it on my script. Oh, okay.
I second.
I got a second. Okay, I'm sorry. It's not in the script. Okay. Any objections to selecting Caitlin Badla as Chair for 2023? So, now we take the vote? Okay, thank you.
Todd Fest.
Yes.
Smithwick Ailey.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Barbaza.
Yes.
Burton.
Yes.
Murray.
Yes.
Congratulations, Caitlin. You have a baby and a chair.
All right. May I have nominations for Planning and Zoning Commission Vice Chair?
I nominate Commissioner Todd Fest.
Second.
Okay, are there any other nominations? Okay, now we vote? Because it's not in the script?
Todd Fest.
Yes.
Smithwick Ailey.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Barbaza.
Yes.
Burton.
Yes.
Murray.
Yes.
Congratulations, Vice Chair Todd Fest.
Thank you. Okay, hearing none. Charlene Todd Fest is the 2023 Planning and Zoning Commission Vice Chair. Okay, we will now move on to public comments without prior notice. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment? Anybody on Zoom? Nope. Okay, so the public comment period is closed. Information items, none. Reports, mayor and council reports. They are none. Here's city manager report. Director of VDNP report, associate planner report.
Thank you. So, just a couple of quick things. One is, thank you for the action on the items tonight. The last one that you did basically is Mr. Jason Young stated, this is going to allow the city to extend Homestead Lane up to East Readout and make that important connection. And then I just wanted to share with you, next week is the week that our consultant comes into town for our riverfront redevelopment project. And so they'll be in town on Wednesday and Thursday, and they will be presenting at the Chamber Luncheon on Wednesday, the 11th. They will also be presenting to the city council in a work session, so that'll be at 4:45. They will also then be hosting the main public engagement on Thursday night at 6:00 PM at the Sports Center. And so there'll be a short presentation, and then there will be an opportunity for, you know, some feedback, comments on different elements of the plan as it's developed. So, I just wanted to share that with you and encourage you to attend one or more if you can. And actually, if I could get a potential show of hands, and the reason I'm asking this is, if all of you show up to the meeting on Thursday night, we would need to notice it as a meeting. And that's fine, we can do that, but we just wouldn't need to know if there's going to be a quorum of the planning commission showing up at any of these meetings. So, could I see just a show of hands for the night of the 12th? Is anybody planning on attending? One, two, three. We might notice it anyway, and that way we'll have our bases covered. So, if additional people want to attend, you can. Exactly. Just, yeah, be rude. Yep. No microphones. Can't talk business. So, yeah, so that is it. And like I say, I encourage you to attend. I think it's going to be exciting. Our consultant is very excited to be in town for the second time, and they've been working hard. They've got a lot of good information to share and some neat ideas that they're going to present at that meeting. So, looking forward to that. And I'll turn it over to Jen.
I have no comment.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner comments. We will start with Sonia Barbaza. Okay, do you have any comments?
No comment.
And Smithwick Ailey?
I'll just say, I do think that allowing the short-term rentals with the ADUs will self-regulate, and it may even move towards solving the same problem that Jordan's trying to solve, because not everybody that starts out wanting to do a VRBO continues. So, I think there's two, they're two very separate rental opportunities, and I've known people that have been super excited about doing an Airbnb, and then they're like, oh, it's too much work. I'm just going to go long term. And, but there's a lot more money to be made, and I don't want to exclude certain parts of the community. So, I hope that, I hope that a lot of people get very excited about the short-term rental opportunity and build a lot of ADUs, and then we'll have, for either, we'll have opportunities for
Thank you. Anderson?
Yes, I agree with Jenny on all that. That was my thought as well, is it will self-regulate. And I just don't want to take options away from people, was my kind of, my background of the whole thing. It's your property, and you have the ADU now available on a short term, and maybe it's easier to go long term, and I think that's what most people end up doing anyways, to be honest with you. Also, thank you, John and Jen, for all your work on that municipal code change. That was a lot, so thank you both.
Burton?
I agree with the two commissioners here, and I think short-term rentals for ADUs has the potential to increase revenue, not only for families but for the city and the tourist season. So, thank you.
Congratulations to our new Vice Chair and to our Chair in Abstentia.
Thank you. And my comment will be, I'm sorry to miss the open house in the meeting. I will be in Inkeridge Chair in Alaska Mental Health Board meeting. That will be online if anybody's interested, and I do know the challenges on the peninsula with seasonal housing. I sit through a lot of community meetings here, and seasonal housing is a big issue. So, and with that, I believe we are adjourned. Thank you. And we will have the special hearing coming up next. Thank you. Yes, we can come back here at 6:50. Does that work? Okay, thank you.
It is digital. It was in the same email link that Justin sent out, but let me go print out a couple more.
I guess they don't expect us to stay long. Yeah. Don't want to make anybody too comfortable.
I mean, it's referenced differently somewhere else, but that's...
Hi, this is Sam. Hi, Sam. My name is Jennifer Hester. I'm the Associate Planner for the city of Soldatna. How are you?
Hi, good evening, Jennifer. I'm doing well, thanks.
You are being broadcast over our council chambers. I don't know if we want to, should we do introductions so he knows who's in the room, or does that not matter?
It doesn't matter to me. Thanks for having me, and I'll just listen in for now.
Okay, and as a friendly reminder for Sam to hear you, you have to speak into the microphone. That's how the AV system is piped in. Thank you. So, we're going to begin the public hearing momentarily.
Okay, I'd like to call to order, and recall, I'd like to call the January 4th, 2023 Planning and Zoning Commission's Appeal Hearing to Order. The special meeting is for the purpose of hearing the appeal from Homer Electric Association to the denied request to install an overhead utility line by Public Works Director Kyle Cornelius. As advised by Charles Casiola, who is present, the city attorney, the city of Soldatna Planning Commission member wears two hats. One hat is a policy hat. For many actions, the planning committee is acting similar to a legislative body that makes policy decisions. The other hat is what I call a jury hat. When considering appeals from individual application, the planning committee is acting like a jury. When acting as a jury, planning commission members must come into the public hearing process without having prejudged the merits of the appeal, just like a jury must begin a criminal trial without having prejudged the guilt or innocence of the defendant. This is why jurors are screened before they are allowed to be on jury. This is a different from some policy issues. The commission members are free to come to the meeting already having decided how they intend to vote. Because the materials in the special meeting packet are information that will be presented at the appeal hearing, you may review the materials in the packet to familiarize yourself with the materials and the background of the appeal. But please remember not to form any advance opinion based only on the review of these written materials. Commission members should not begin to consider how to decide the appeal until the appeal hearing is concluded. A fair hearing before people who have not already made up their minds is a critical part of the rule of law in our democratic system. Please call the roll.
Todd Fest.
Here.
Smithwick Ailey.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
Barbaza.
Here.
Burton.
Here.
Murray.
Here.
And Chair Badla has excused absence.
Thank you. Public hearings. Planning Commission's Appeal Hearing, an appeal from Homer Electric Association Incorporated to allow an overhead installation of utility to 199 Karen Street. May I have a motion to approve the exception request?
Commissioner Murray, so move.
And a second? Do either Homer Electric Association or Department of Public Works have any objection to any planning commission member participating in the hearing? How long does HEA believe they need for the presentation? How long does the Department of Public Works believe they need for their presentation? Okay. Each party will have an additional five minutes per side following the primary presentation of each side, as well as after public comment, if any, to respond to any of the information presented during the hearing. Anyone may participate in the appeal hearing. Any persons wishing to participate may present information at the hearing. With that said, the commission will provide participants other than HEA and Department of Public Works, if there are any, who wish to participate with three minutes to provide information. The public hearing is now open. HEA has the floor for 15 minutes. The public hearing is now open. H E A has the floor for 15 minutes. Got the floor.
There we go. Thank you, commissioners, for hearing this appeal tonight, and thank you for volunteering to be on the Planning and Zoning Commission. I used to work at the Borough before this position, and I understand how much work and energy goes into being a commissioner and how important these decisions are. Excuse me. My name is Scott Huff. I'm a land management officer with Homer Electric. We do have Brad Zuback back here behind me. He's a director of engineering. H E A is asking for an appeal of the decision made by the Public Works Director regarding a utility permit application for an overhead electric service on Karen Street. Back in October, H E A received an application from a landowner requesting a new commercial electric service at 199 Karen Street. The utility permit application was prepared by H E A and submitted to the City of Soldatna. We had some discussions with the Public Works Director. He informed me that any new utilities were to be installed underground, and we were requesting for an above-ground facility. And so we worked on preparing an exception request. I contacted all the other utility providers and obtained letters of non-objection from them and submitted those to the city on November 1st with a request for an exception to Soldatna Municipal Code 1230070 to allow one new overhead service line. If you look at the map on page 11 of your packet, it's an aerial map of the area. It shows 199 Karen Street. It's the wooded lot at the end of Karen Street on the east side of East Marydale Avenue. That lot has been cleared recently, so those trees are no longer there. It adjoins the parking lot for the Peninsula Community Health Services. You can see in the aerial imagery, there's a covered parking area on the lot just to the east of subject property. As you can see, all the surrounding area has been subdivided, and there's no more large parcels that could be further subdivided into smaller lots. Karen Street is not a very busy street. Most of the traffic runs down East Marydale Avenue. There's a light at the intersection of East Marydale and the Kenai Spur. So that's the typical way that people would traverse to get into and out of this area. H E A submitted a utility drawing with their application, and you can see that on page four of your packet. So on that drawing, there's a bright red line that's been highlighted. That's the proposed overhead electric service. And it starts from the existing power pole. It's labeled G6296240, which is on the north side of Karen Street. The new proposed line would cross Karen Street and connect to a consumer meter pole on the private property on Track 2. If you look just to the left of that line, there's another gray line that crosses Karen Street. That's an existing overhead service that supplies power to the parking lot. And that building there has, there's lights within the building, and there may be some other receptacles, but that's how the power is brought over to that building. And then on that power pole on the north side, there's a gray line that parallels Karen Street. That is the existing overhead primary line. And it runs to the southwest, down to the Kenai Spur Highway, and crosses the Kenai Spur Highway, also continues to the northeast with that overhead primary line up to East Marydale Avenue, and then it turns north along Taiyi Street. And on the drawing, you'll see two lines labeled E O P. That's for edge of pavement. So that's the paved portion of Karen Street. And you'll see there's also a sidewalk on the south side of Karen Street. And then if you flip over to page 10 of your packet, there's a street view from Google Maps. This is just like if you're driving down the street, which you would see. 199 Karen Street is the treed parcel, which is on the right side of the image behind that building. Those trees are cleared now, but there is still some, some of the birch trees are still there. You can see the paved road of Karen Street, and there's curb and gutter on both sides with the attached sidewalk on the south side or the right-hand side of the photo. You can see the overhead primary line, which parallels Karen Street, and from that power pole. At the top of the pole, there's a transformer, and there's a guy anchor that comes off that power pole to provide support. And then between that power pole and the guy anchor, you can see a communications pedestal right there, too, in the ground on the left side of the photo, which is the north side of the right-of-way. There is, right in the very middle of the photo, right above the crosswalk, you can see one black line. That's the electric service that goes from the power pole to the meter pole on the right-hand side, which provides power to the parking lot area. And we were requesting one more service exactly like that. It'd go right from the same power pole on the left side over to a new meter pole behind the parking area on the right side. What you don't see on this Google map is that there is six other utilities underground right here. There's an underground communication line, a fiber optic line on the north side of the right-of-way, which is where that telephone pedestal is. There's an underground sewer main within Karen Street. There's two water mains within Karen Street. And then there looks like there's a storm drain catch basin on the right-hand side or the south side of Karen Street, so there's probably a storm drain line there as well, collection system. And then also, what you don't see on the south side of Karen Street or the right side of this photo is there's an underground natural gas line, and that's four feet from the right-of-way. So H E A is requesting an exception to Soldatna Municipal Code 1230070 to allow an overhead line as opposed to an underground line across Karen Street. There's three main reasons that granting an exception request is beneficial. It would allow the project, excuse me, allow the project to be completed in a timely manner. It is cost-effective, and an overhead installation is the most simple and safest way to provide power to the applicant. An overhead line can be completed during the winter time. We can go out there and put the pole in the ground even when the ground is frozen. If we have to go underground, then it has to have a directional boring underneath Karen Street, which cannot be done when the ground is frozen. So that would delay the project until sometime after June 1st of 2023, which would be about a six-month delay to the landowner for their development. It's also cost-effective to have an overhead electric line instead of a boring. A directional boring would add an additional $5,000 to $9,000 to the cost of this project, which would nearly double it. Additional costs for the directional boring may prohibit the landowner from completing their improvements. The overhead installation is also the most simple and the safest way to provide power to the applicant. As I mentioned, there's six other utility lines underneath Karen Street right now that the boring would have to try to avoid. There'd only be one new service from this power, from the existing power pole to a new meter base. There would be no new poles within the right-of-way, no new transformers within the right-of-way, just one more line that crosses Karen Street. And also, it would be the last line that could be extended from that transformer. All the lots are served in the area, so there would be two crossings, and there wouldn't be any more in the future. So I prepared five findings that you could use to support the exception to Soldatna Municipal Code 1230070, and those are included in your packet. Number one, an underground installation will delay the delivery of electricity by six months. Number two, the overhead installation is cost-effective for the landowner. Number three, an overhead installation will avoid all other buried utility lines and eliminate the potential for hitting an underground utility line. And no additional electric services will be extended from pole G6296240, as all lots will be supplied with electricity. And number five, all other utility providers have issued letters of non-objection for the proposed overhead utility line. So in summary, granting the exception request is beneficial to the landowner as well as the city and not detrimental in any way. Some of the benefits of allowing an overhead electric installation is it allows the project to be completed in a timely manner this winter. The landowner can begin their project sooner for their development. It's less expensive for the landowner and saves them between $4,000 and $9,000. It will encourage development within the city, and it's a simple installation. It's just one overhead line across Karen Street. There's no new poles, no new transformers, and it avoids the existing underground lines within Karen Street. And so for those reasons, we hope that you approve the appeal and grant the exception to Soldatna Municipal Code 1230070 to allow for one new overhead electric service to be installed across Karen Street. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions from commissioners?
Commissioner Anderson here. What would be the depth of the electrical line if you were to need to bore it underneath?
I have to ask Brad on that one. You'd have to avoid all the other existing utilities.
I understand that. I was going to ask what the gas depth was, sewer, water. Is this like we are going in between all this stuff? I know they are certain, typically your sewer is your deepest, but I'm curious, is it four feet down, 10 feet?
Yes, it would be, probably be above the sewer and water lines in Karen Street, but below the utilities.
Like below the gas line?
Certainly below the water line.
Okay. And then do we know the height of the current perpendicular line that crosses in relation to the parallel line? It does look like it's lower. Is that the line that it would, the new line would parallel this current perpendicular one, correct?
The new line would be exactly the same as that service line right now, existing service line.
And do we know the height of that one?
It's a minimum, they have to be at least 20 feet.
20, okay.
I'm just curious. Commissioner Burton here. Is this area that you're proposing for the overhanging power line, is this the only access point to the customer here? Are there any other areas that can provide electricity?
Thank you through the chair. Yes, this is the only, the primary line is right in Karen Streets. That's where the electricity would have to come from.
Commissioner Murray, you said that there wouldn't be a new pole, but there would have to be a new pole on the applicant's property, correct?
Correct. It'd be on private property. No new poles within the dedicated right-of-way.
Okay, that's what you meant.
Yes.
Another question, the vacant lot across the street, does that have electricity to it? Is that, that would be fed off that existing, because you said you can't have more electricity coming off that transformer.
The lot to the north has already served electricity. There'd be no new overhead services from this pole because both lots across from it have been served.
How about the vacant lot on the other side of the street?
That lot would not require an overhead service line because it's already, it just dropped down from the transformer and right to the meter.
Okay. One other question. I understand that the existing service that comes, that feeds the neighbor there, is on their side of the property line. Is there any possibility, if the neighbors agreed, that you could put two services off of that existing overhead?
That could be an option.
So then you're not adding another line and another, you know, okay.
Oh, right. That line maybe needs to be improved, existing line. Because right now it serves, has one member service on it.
Okay, so it wouldn't accommodate two boxes, in other words?
May not. We'll have to look at that to see.
Yeah.
Commissioner Anderson here. If you were to bore below, would it provide the opportunity to run both lines during that time?
Yeah, a conduit would be put underground.
And then we could run both if that was to occur. It's possible for H E A to do that? No?
It would be a cost to the other member. Another member would have to request relocation, rework of service.
Okay.
Just to follow up, Madam Chair, but they would share the cost, I mean, it would, either the one, the applicant would bear the whole cost of whatever it is. It would just be a sizing issue if both of them came together and shared that expense, or if they could agree to that.
If they agreed, there's no reason for them, motivation for them to do that.
Yeah, I understand that. It's just whether or not they would, they would consider that. Question is, how much would the cost be? Would it be one and a half times? Would it be twice as much to do both of them?
I believe it would still be within the range that Scott cited in the appeal, five to $1,000.
Totally. And obviously, well, we'll get to that. Thank you. Thank you.
Excuse me. Give the floor to the Department of Public Works for 15 minutes, and five minutes for rebuttal and 15 to present their information. H E A will be provided five minutes to rebut Department Public Works testimony after it concludes. Please note that that clock on the wall, time has stopped, so I'm going to have to refer to my phone.
I messed it up. I'm sorry.
And this is Sam Severn, if I may briefly. I declined to introduce myself earlier, meetings go late, and I just didn't want to take the floor, but I should identify myself for the record that I'm the attorney for Public Works. And I may not even speak much, but I just wanted to identify myself.
Okay, thank you. And now Kyle.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, commissioners. So in preparing for this appeal hearing, you know, I found myself wanting to justify the requirement to place utilities underground. But per Mr. Casiola's memorandum, you know, that's not under consideration because that's in code. My understanding is that I'm to communicate my reasoning for denying the request for the exception. The request did warrant careful consideration because the new overhead electric would begin at a common pole, as noted previously, where overhead electric already existed. I gave due consideration to the request for exception, and my decision was reasoned. In fact, before officially denying the exception request, I did consult with several city staff members, and they had concurred with my conclusion. That existing overhead electric was installed prior to the underground requirement, and that requirement was enacted through ordinance 2008-13. That ordinance clearly indicates the reasoning for underground, for the underground requirement, that overhead lines undermine the goal to maintain a more beautiful community, create safety issues due to damage from weather and other factors, and specifically that without a controlling ordinance, utilities would continue to use cost as a justification to install overhead instead of underground. You know, despite there being a nearby existing line, this would be a new overhead electric line, placing two cables above Karen Street at this location. The exception request justifications that I received, and then the additional ones in the appeal packet before you, are either not particularly relevant or are based on cost. And just going through some of those and responding, the fact that there's already an overhead crossing here, that may be the fact, but this is a new overhead line in the right-of-way. Having an overhead and underground creates confusion. You know, I don't think that, you know, with modern technology, with record drawings, with our G I S capabilities, there really won't be any confusion about what is placed where in the right-of-way. It's not the intent of the code, and with that, I just respectfully disagree. Delayed installation until spring, you know, that's a common issue with all utilities and all construction efforts in our climate, in our geographical area. You know, seasonal and winter work is common. The fact is, the code requires underground installation always, not just in summer. The cost of the landowner. The cost is not completely unreasonable. Again, the ordinance initiating the code provision clearly considered cost. The underground effort associated with this is very routine. The fact that it's the last property without power in this area, that doesn't warrant an additional overhead line when the code prohibits overhead utilities. Conflicts with other utilities, you know, there is nothing unique in this street or right-of-way. Most of the other facilities are eight to 10 feet deep and not in conflict. There is a gas main that is on one side of the right-of-way, would be in a perpendicular fashion. If the existence of other utilities in the right-of-way was an allowable reason to not go underground, we simply wouldn't have underground. You know, there are existing utilities in nearly every right-of-way. No objections from other utilities. That doesn't, isn't surprising. You know, it's not their right-of-way or municipal code. You know, it's, that's, that's common for other utilities not to object. I will note that, you know, in ACS is not objection. They, you know, they noted that all their infrastructure is already underground and not in conflict. So yes, it costs more to place utilities underground than overhead. Seasonal installation is common and expected. The presence of other utilities in the right of way, you know, if that was a deterrent, nothing would be placed underground. This is a pretty standard underground installation in regards to the horizontal directional drilling and the ability to not impact existing infrastructure. You're probably wondering, what would I consider a justifiable exception request? You know, in the code, it does identify two examples already in the code. I think it indicates rock, wetlands. Other examples might be contaminated soils, critical habitat, insurmountable kind of obstacles like that. So in summary, you know, I faithfully consider the exception request, apply the reasoning that I've noted tonight and enforce the municipal code to the best of my understanding. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions from Commissioners?
Commissioner Murray, have you had other requests? Or maybe it's an HEA question. Have other people done underground this winter or previous winters? In other words, the point is that you can't do it. And I'm just wondering if that's in.
You, well, you can do anything with the right amount of money. I have people ask me all that all the time. I'm like, well, we can build a parking garage, just the right amount of money. It is, it is more expensive to do winter work and that is a fact of the matter. I can't think off the top of my head. Most, most work is postponed and planned for around the winter. Sometimes there's temporary utilities that are utilized in the winter until permanent facilities can be put in place. So yeah, it's uncommon to have winter work. It's something that we face in public work all the time with our capital projects, dealing with winter shuts, winter shutdowns and things of that nature.
Any other questions?
Commissioner Anderson. Has there been other scenarios where we've done this with the city with, gone perpendicular to roads that have obviously sewer, water, gas, but like fiber optics, telephone, anything? Any other utilities that maybe there's a void in there at a depth that is typically there, but maybe with other utilities, like newer age stuff that's filled that void and now when they're coming across? I'm just trying to think. Is this out of the, is this out of nowhere type request that you've seen before?
You mean the justification for not wanting to do underground and boring?
Yeah, potential risk of line strikes.
I don't see anything abnormal about this situation whatsoever. Directional drilling, you know, they have the ability to change depth and move, you know, subsurface. So I don't see anything unique about this underground.
Okay.
Bore.
Thank you.
In my experience.
Commissioner Burton. On page 10, where we see the Google shot, for my clarification here, this main electrical line that's going across, there is no plan for this particular line to go underground. This is sort of a grandfathered in line that will remain above ground for.
Okay.
Yeah, that's correct.
Thank you.
Commissioner Smith-Wickelley, following up on that question. Is there a situation? Like change of use where that other pole would eventually be put or line be put underground? Is, if the, so right now it's just a parking lot with a light pole. That's why there's electric, I think. But if there was going to be another building constructed there, is there anything in our code that says that it would have to? It wouldn't be grandfathered in any longer? I, that's because, you might not be the right person to ask, but that's how I understood all of the overheads in Saldana where eventually we're going to be able to go underground in theory.
I think it would be difficult to retroactively apply the underground requirement. So new permitted projects are required to adhere to the municipal code. So it would have to be a permitted project that came to the city at the property owner's and utilities request.
Any other questions?
Commissioner Murray, just, I think to follow up on what Jenny said. I think what she was asking is that, and maybe it's an HEA question, that service to that existing, from that existing pole would be sufficient for any sort of development on that property? That, so it's really an HEA question? Sorry.
Yeah, I, if they were not dealing with city right of way, then the city would not get involved.
Do you know that if, if they were to need to upgrade the gauge of that wire and they needed to replace the line, would that be a reason for code to be enacted? That now we're changing, something we're adding, we're increasing? And at that time, now they have to fall in line with the new and you're no longer grandfathered?
You know, maybe counsel can guide me better. You know, we take each and every request and consider the circumstances. I would hesitate to give you a definitive answer tonight based on circumstances. So, and I think right now we're talking about this other request or the denial of the exception request. So it'd be difficult to answer that question right now.
Any other questions? Does HEA wish to respond? If so, you have five minutes. Okay, are there any other questions? Okay, is there anyone? Oh.
Please, yeah, come up to the microphone.
Hi, Brad Zubek with Homer Electric. If further service or additional service were required, we may need to increase the size or capacity of the transformer. So there is a chance that we would have to come back with another permit to rework the service in that area. Yes.
Anything else? Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to speak on this item? Okay. Please state your name. And you have three minutes.
My name's Chris Crookshank. I'm with Legacy Electric and we own the property. And we're really hoping to not incur other costs being we're going to have to put up a beautification fence and landscaping already. It's going to start becoming prohibitive cost-wise and we might just have to abandon the project on the property and move elsewhere.
Do either HEA or Department of Public Works wish to respond to the public testimony? Thank you. Okay, does HEA wish to provide a two-minute summary? Does the Department of Public Works wish to provide a two-minute summary? Okay, thank you. And the person online, were they going to Zoom? Were they going to speak or they're just there?
Sam?
No, thank you at this time. I don't have anything to add. Thank you.
Okay. So the public hearing is now closed. And? Now what do we do? Okay, there may be a motion for an executive session.
I move that the Planning Commission convene into executive session for the purpose of deliberating in consultation with the city attorney.
A second?
I second.
Thank you. All persons other than regular commission members, the city attorney, the director of economic development and planning and/or the associate planner are asked to leave the room. The executive session will not commence until all persons have left council chambers. The Planning Commission will deliberate, 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 sorry, and then re-enter open session to vote on the motion. Participants are welcome to visit, to wait in the lobby.
And this is Sam. I will go ahead and hang up. I appreciate a call back to listen to the, when they come back in public session.
Okay. And we, now I just read that, but it says to consult with the attorney. So is that, does the attorney stay in the room? Yes, okay. I'm sorry. Okay, and then executive session commencing. Oh, you're lis, okay. I was thinking they were asked to leave the room in my script. That's why I was confused. So you guys can stay. Okay, and so how does this proceed? Just if we have questions to you and free for all or? Shall now be included? Sure. Okay, do you want to take a five minute? No? Okay. Okay.
Hi, this is Sam.
Hi, Sam. This is Jennifer Hester, the associate planner for the City of Saldana. We are back from executive session. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Okay, thank you. The executive session has concluded and all other persons may enter council chambers. Would the clerk please reread the motion and conduct a roll call vote on the question? When voting on the motion, committee members should summarize the reasons for the members' yes or no vote.
I motion to grant HEA the exception it requests to have an overhead electric line in the city right of way rather than a buried line that, absent the exception, is required by code. And then for the roll call. Barbaza? Oh, yes or no?
Oh, no.
Anderson?
No.
Topfest?
No.
Smith-Wickelley?
No.
Burton?
No.
And Murray?
No.
Motion fails.
Saldana Municipal Code 1710-040G5 and 6 require decisions on appeals to be in writing. It is not feasible to have a written decision by the conclusion of the special meeting. Written findings will be prepared and formally approved by the Planning Commission its next meeting. The purpose of formally approving the written findings is to comply with Saldana Municipal Code 1710-040G5 and 6, which ensures there is a clear written record of the commission's decision and the reasons for it. The written findings and decision will include relevant appeal information should a party wish to appeal the commissioner's decision. And we are adjourned. Do we need a motion to adjourn? Just adjourn. Okay, the motion is adjourned, or the meeting is adjourned, excuse me. The next regular meeting of the Saldana Planning and Zoning Commission will be held on February 1st, 2023 at 5:30 PM in the city council chambers.